Carson City School District Meeting to order. Looking at number one, adoption of the agenda.
So.
Moved by Joe, second by Laurel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? Seeing none, sorry about that. Working on number two, flag salute. Mr. Cassiopa, would you please join us?
Yes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to number three, superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. By all appearances, school is about to start. Tomorrow, we will be having our teachers return, and we'll have three days of training. It's been a lot of fun to interact with. We had freshman orientation today and seeing many staff members and parents. It was a lot of fun. The 19th, of course, a week from yesterday, will be our first day of school, and that is for grades K through 12. And our preschoolers will begin on the 26th of August. Also, I'd just like to make a statement regarding our school-based health center. Parents who might need to have immunizations or sports physicals for their children and are maybe having a little difficulty getting in to see their family practice doctor are welcome to go to our school-based health center. And the days that that facility is open is Tuesdays and Thursdays, and they're open from 7:00 a.m. until 5:30. Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to board reports. Laurel?
I just wanted to thank Carrie Pryor for the new hire breakfast that she put on. I was able to go, and it looks like she's got this new bunch all excited and ready to start work. And also thank the Carson High School staff and the Blue Crew and everyone for putting on freshman orientation today. It was my third one in four years, but the kids look ready to go. Lockers have been figured out, and schedules are in order, so it looks good.
Richard?
Just real quick. This has been pretty well advertised for everybody, but I thought I might remind everybody. Tomorrow, the 6th grade at Carson Middle School, they're having their back-to-school Snake Peak between 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then on August 15th, the following day, the 7th, 8th grade has their Snake Peak back-to-school from 4:00 to 6:00. Then on August 16th, Boardrick Bray, they have their meet-and-greet from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. August 28th, Boardrick Bray have their back-to-school night, 5:30, 7:30. Like I said, it's been pretty well advertised, but I thought it may be worth mentioning again. And also, I was able to attend the new hire breakfast. And there again, I'd like to thank Carrie Pryor, Mr. Stokes. Great job. I think it was a good time, and I think the teachers are fired up. And I'd just like to welcome all the teachers back to school, the veterans and the new ones, and the students. And I just hope everybody has a great year, and I anticipate they will. And I'm just glad to be part of everything at the district here. Thank you.
Yeah, no report for the high school, but again, I wanted to reiterate the comments about the new hire. It was fun, and I think you represented us really well. It was actually pretty entertaining. I thought you, between you, Sam, and Carrie, it was pretty fun. And Richard, I think our being able to snag Carrie from the Today Show and the airline industry, good for us. Yeah. That's it for me.
I'll just mention Carson High School. The Blue Thunder Marching Band has begun. Last week, they did 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 every day, and this week, they're doing 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. because of the anticipation of the teacher meetings and so forth. So this Friday, was that the 16th? 7:00 p.m., they're going to be having a, on the football field, kind of appearance or anyone who's interested, kind of a preview of their show. They won't be finished completely, but the first football game, I think, begins the first Friday of September, so they're getting ready.
Thank you.
So I'll just share my same, well, same as everybody else, well wishes for the new year. I know that in all of our schools now is the time when teachers are putting in long days and early mornings, and principals and assistant principals are probably pulling their hair out trying to get everything lined up. And so I know it's going to be an exciting year, and I look forward to seeing all the great things that happen.
Yeah, that new hire thing was really good. I can't remember the last time I ran through a row of cheerleaders cheering for me as I walked through, so that was kind of cool. Almost want to incorporate that into our budget meetings when we have those. Have the cheerleaders, so we can walk through there and get all excited about it. Still working on my walk-up song, Carrie, if you're watching.
AJ, come on, number 12.
Right? And then just, I mean, the staff at the mansion was great. The cheerleaders were good. Also like to thank AJ and Raymond's staff for working, and Jose's staff for working to get the teachers being able to be paid at a normal time instead of having to wait that four hours. And Raymond, your department, for getting the email so that those new hires have their own addresses. So we do appreciate you guys going the extra mile for them to get this started outright. And I thank you to Campani Ford, who did their drive for Ford, drive for the football team on Saturday and raised $5,000, so we do appreciate their support, too. So moving on to number five, association reports. Loretta?
And we appreciate the staff that's been there for a week and a half already, too, of your organization.
Yeah. Well, good evening, Madam President, trustees, administration, and Renee back there. Sorry I wasn't here in the last meeting. I was putting a car show together that weekend, and I had other things I had to plan, so sorry I missed you. I tried to catch you on the TV, but you kind of froze at certain times, so anyway. Just a few things. I would like to thank Mr. Stokes for putting out a letter to the staff on the salary benefits to kind of make some clarification of the raises. I'm sure you guys had a lot of calls asking about what's going on. Anyway, I think you did a really nice job of presenting what you guys are doing for us and some of the extras, things that you took on for us, and we really appreciated that. And then I also would like to thank the district for having CESA be at today's new hires. This is the second year we've been part of that, and it's where CESA gets to talk to the new hires and tell them about our stuff that we do, and we provided lunch for them. And so we got to meet some new people, and they're really enthused and scared at the same time. So we really appreciate the district for allowing us to be part of that. And then I'd like to thank Dr. Delphin and AJ for, there's a letter that he sent out to all of us CESA people and explaining how we've restructured, did the salary, and how we streamlined over 100 job titles to 51. So I'm going to tell you, that's a big downsizing, so we really appreciate that. Also on that letter, he invited anyone who wants to know more information about this to attend our annual meeting for CESA. It'll be Saturday, August 31st at 11:00 a.m. at the retail drive at the Roundtable. So if anybody out there classified, if you have questions about the salary scale or reclassification, I know we're going to be bombarded, this would be a great time for you to come and ask questions. And I know Mr. Delphin will be there. Will AJ be there? So we really appreciate that.
Left me hanging there, right there.
I was like, aren't you coming? No, I really want to thank the district for really helping us restructuring. That was such a huge thing. And I know we have questions still, and I'm going to try to explain the best I can to our group when I see them, and good luck with that. And then September 7th, CESA will be having our annual Wild Waters, and it's $20 per person up to 10 people. And that gets you in all day. You get to eat all day, and you can have everything for free, so it's a really good time for not only us, but teachers and other little districts come together on that one day, and it's a good time. I call it, again, my Caddyshack Day. We just go and go have a good time. So other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. We appreciate you guys working with us, too. And I mean, it's been a long process for that, so we appreciate the patience on both sides. We're thankful that it got done right. Moving on to number six, public comment. Comments may be made by members of the public on any manner within the authority of this board. Please note the public comment may be taken on items marked for possible action. Before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at this time that are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matters until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at the meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and not simply repeat comments made by others. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, moving on to number seven, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 218, Internet Safety and Internet Acceptable Use. Second reading for possible action. Raymond.
Good evening, President and members of the board. I'm here today for the second reading of Policy Number 218, Internet Safety and Technology Acceptable and Responsible Use. You guys should have this in your board packet. I believe the items changed based on feedback from our last meeting are indicated in red. I'll just open it up for any questions you guys may have.
Any questions? Nope. We made all the corrections we asked for. Appreciate that.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve August 13, 2019 as a revised date for CCSD Policy 218, Internet Safety and Technology Acceptable and Responsible Use.
Motion by Mike, second by Laurel. Any discussion on the motion by the board? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Raymond. Appreciate you updating this one.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Moving on to number eight, informational update on staffing for the Carson City School District for the 2019-2020 school year, for discussion only. Dr. Delphin.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, staff. I'm operating from here so that I can work the computer, if you don't mind. So I wanted to have the Mission Impossible theme song working in the background here, but I couldn't quite find it, something about copyrighting. So for your information, here's how we stand in this year's staffing report. So it was quite a busy year. It started with Mrs. Kima, and that cascaded, it seemed like forever, for interviewing administrators after that. As you know, we had Mrs. Fuson, we have Mr. Ward, we have all kinds of new people in their positions. But all told, only three actually left the district, but a lot of dominoes happened after that. We had 45 teachers retire and/or resign, and we also had about a grand, big one this year of 74 classified staff. That's the most I've seen since I've been here, but it's about 11 years' worth of data, and that's a lot of classified staff to be moving around. Again, these numbers don't reflect the personnel dominoes that are in district, whether they get promoted, or they transfer, or they get reassigned within the school building, and it's all because of the turnover that happens when we have people resign or retire. So if you have any questions at any of these slides, yes? Mr. Varner?
I do have a question. On the 74 classified positions that retired or quit, that's a lot.
It is.
And I'm wondering if there's been any analysis done of why so many, such a large turnover? Was it due to retirements, or is there some other dissatisfaction going on in the jobs that are forcing people to want to move on to different? And I guess I'd ask the same question about the teachers, you know, like how many retired versus how many just decided, call it quits, or moved to the different areas?
Right, right. I think for classified, it can vary, Mr. Varner, from spouses leaving the area, from people that can find better-paying positions now that the economy's a little bit better. It's usually better for classified staff in good times. In not-so-good times, I've seen that number a lot lower, to be honest with you. So I think my theory is it's the good economy, and they're able to find better-paying jobs.
Are you guys still doing exit interviews to interview the people when they leave to see why they're leaving?
They can fill out a survey, and I haven't seen too many of those. I think they're so busy that they're not doing those, to be honest with you. But we do give them that opportunity. Now, for teachers, that number's actually lower than usual. I usually get between 50 to 70, actually. So that number's gone down this year, and I think more people are seeing that the green is better here, or the grass is greener in Carson City for the teaching staff. So I attribute that really to just, I think, positive morale among the teachers. Administrators, again, those were retirements and personal reasons. It wasn't really out of anything else, so... But you're right, that's a lot of classified, but they are very in salary. So for the most part, the ones that don't make a lot of money and are young can move, and they do. I see that within the millennial generation especially, across the table, whether they're teachers or classified staff.
Well, and didn't we have five classifieds that actually got their teaching certificates and were hired as teachers?
We did. Thank you.
So five of those went up to teaching, which you'll see in the next slide, I'm sure.
Yeah, six, six or five, you're right. And then we have about six in the hopper right now doing student teaching that will be teachers, so we're growing our own. So I'm okay if you blame me for that.
One of the things I'm wondering about is, and it's something I suggested last year, and I think that every time we have these reports, we get, I think, this. But we're not doing exit interviews, we're not getting those surveys filled out, we're not doing, you know, climate surveys that are independent. And so when, I think that when a lot of us hear from teachers or employees in the district, they're not talking about the positive culture. And so I think that we need to do a better job of getting that data so that it's not just, "I think," because up here, we all have certain perceptions, but we don't know exactly what's going on at each of those schools, or if there's little tweaks that we could put into place to kind of help support these employees, or you guys could do. And I think that we need to do a better job of really looking into that, because people are working really hard for the school district. And if there's things we could do to keep them happy and keep them employed here, I think that's what we want to do.
Mr. Walker, that's a great point. I can tell you, in comparison, our neighbors to the south have a 30% attrition rate every year. One out of three teachers leave out of Clark County. We are less than 10%. In fact, that's the lowest I've seen in 11 years in attrition. So you're right, I think every district could do a better job with exit interviews and surveys and climate. But I can tell you that that will be very different for each individual, and you might see a few trends. But Nevada, by and large, is a very mobile area, not just because of teaching, just because of the economy here. It's a boom or bust state, and that's what I see, the difference here in Nevada versus Maryland, where I come from.
And I understand that, and that's why I'm saying that we need to do a better job of getting the data. Because knowing that it's a transient state, there's a lot of options for people, and we want to keep them happy. And I think that a little bit of effort in the direction of getting to employee satisfaction is going to help us a lot.
Agreed. There are no questions? I'm going to slide number three. Now, this one is almost as good as AJ's. That font is really small, but not quite too small. So this report comes from our, so I know I'm making fun of AJ, sorry, buddy. Comes out of our employment online application system, and this gives you how many applications were submitted exactly one year from today, and that's over 2,000 applications. That's important, because I really only have two staff members that look at applications for the entire district. So they do a great job, and I'm going to thank them in a little bit. But you can see where the spikes are with regard to when our peak season begins, which is kind of in the end of March, until now, actually. So we're still in the big spike range. So that gives you some idea where the mobility, or when, I should say, when the mobility begins to really earthquake for us. And they're still shaking it up here. Unfortunately, I still, every day, get some resignation or somebody who's going, and I also try to fill those positions as we go through. But I will show you in the next couple of slides that we're actually doing okay with hiring. And then the circles on the bottom or ovals are options out of the online application system. They don't have to fill out their ethnicity, race, or gender, but those that do, do. And so on that first oval, out of 190, I'm sorry, 1,957 people, 108 identify as not Hispanic Latino, and three identify as Hispanic. And then on the middle one is race. 120 claim white, 37 claim two or more races, and then three are black or African-American. And the last oval, 1,626 female identified, 324 male, 82 no response, and 36 declined to identify. So on this graph, on the first one on the top, the highest education level is all the way to a Juris Doctorate, which is that one on the right side, all the way to high school diploma. So you can see that, by and large, of course, people are going to have their high school diplomas, and it gets shorter in frequency as you get to your PhDs and your JD folks, and a lot of people in between the bachelor's and master's degrees. And the top undergrad colleges, where they're coming from, other, I don't know what that means, to be honest with you, that could be anywhere, but the ones that I know about are Western Nevada College with 10 more than UNR, and then Truckee, TMCC, WGU, Sierra Nevada College, University of Phoenix, UNLV, Colorado, all the way down to Arizona State. And Mr. Stokes, when he looked at this, kind of had an epiphany that not a lot come from this area as far as the Southwest. So we're looking mostly east of us, by and large. And then if you're looking at the top grad colleges, number one is UNR, of course, and then it goes all the way down to TMCC, but I questioned that because I didn't know they had a grad program, but maybe they do. And then the top states, where people are coming from, again, we're seeing a lot from Nevada, which is the majority here. Next one would be California, and then everybody else out east. Wisconsin comes in at a fourth, Florida, outside the U.S., four of them, Oregon, Hawaii, Alaska, Washington, Indiana, Idaho, Arizona, Ohio, Michigan, Massachusetts, Montana, North Dakota, Pennsylvania, and Texas. So we are national, international. So today, we're doing pretty well. So we have 11 classified vacancies. That's everything from custodian to parapro to clerical. We have seven teachers that we need to still fill. Usually, it's special ed. This year's not any different. I need four. But considering I had over a dozen that I needed to start with, that's pretty good. Most of our retirees that are in critical need positions, there are three of them, they're coming back for another year. So without them, we would have seven vacancies in special ed, two in regular ed, but we have a plan for them. The principals always have a plan, because they're principals, and I appreciate them for that. And then one TOSA vacancy. That may not be a vacancy, depending on how the principal decides to use that FTE. So what does that mean? Well, I still need a lot of sub-teachers, paras, office staff, custodians, cookbakers, newnades. Oh, did I leave out, yeah, athletic coaches. I need some athletic coaches as well. There's a bunch of those positions. Oh, bus drivers. Oh, how did I forget that? Always need bus drivers. So Mr. Varner, if you've got your CDL, you've got nothing to do, right? Come on down. Any questions? This is really good, you guys, I'm just saying. We had a lot of vacancies. That was over 100-something vacancies. And the fact that we're down to a couple dozen is phenomenal. And a lot of those, we have a plan for. Kudos. I got to say kudos to my HR staff. Again, I have two full-time staff that look at every application, and that's a lot of apps, folks. One, benefits coordinator, takes care of all the insurance for every single person that's full-time. One, senior HR analyst. I have no middle manager. I have, I'm one of the only administrators at the DO that doesn't have anyone between me and my clerical staff. So they do a lot of the grunt work and all the heavy lifting, and then I do all the other stuff that nobody wants to do, mostly those investigations. And then we are the smallest department in the school district as well, as we deal with recruitment, hiring, intake, salaries, benefits, personnel matters for all full-time and part-time employees. As of today, we have 950 full-time people and 225 part-time folks. That's a lot of people. Here's my plea to everybody in TV land, please apply for our positions at carsoncityschools.com. We need volunteers for everything. Please don't wait till May. If you're a parent, start your process now, because by May, it's really hard to get you in. So if you're a parent out there, especially a new person to our district, and you want to see why we are so great as a school district, come and volunteer. We're fun to be around. That ends my report.
Thank you, Jose. Any questions?
I just want to say, not a question, but I think I agree with you. We're doing a great job. Your department's doing a great job bringing people on. Do you have any, I guess I do have a question, any early projections on where we're going to be through the course of this year when we start looking for hiring for the next school year?
Well, I'm hoping that we keep our fiscal director, if he doesn't, you know, start getting happy soon. I think special ed, seriously, is usually the case. So far, you know, I got a knock on wood, math and science has gotten filled. That's great. Probably one of the first times I've seen most of our hard-to-fill filled. Even speech paths, filled. We still have contractors, but by and large, we're sitting pretty well. So I got to tell you, the word is out that Carson's the place to work. So thank you, Mr. Cassiopa. Appreciate the, kudos. I'll give you your $50 later. Appreciate that.
So do we have any idea how many long-term subs we have at this point?
Probably. Good question, Mrs. Wilkie. I'm thinking about between five and seven. But here's the good thing, I have, out of those five and seven, at least six of them are waiting for their license to come through the Department of Ed. So there's a plan. There's always a plan. Yep. Because we always have kids.
Right.
No matter what we do.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work your folks do. I know the three months that everybody else has off is when your staff is doing the most work, so.
Yeah, they're a great staff.
Do send their regards for us.
Thank you.
That they're doing a great job. We appreciate it.
Three months? Who gives three months anymore?
I don't, I don't get a weekend, so.
You're going to get emails now.
Right, here we go. Okay, moving on to number nine then. Discussion and possible action on the Nevada Association of School Board nominations for Innovative Educator of the Year to be considered for recognition during the 2019 Annual Conference for Possible Action. You have in your packet the two nominees, so whatever feedback, comments, direction, this is the time.
this is the time. Richard?
No, I was gonna say, they're both really good choices, so I don't think I can go wrong with everyone, whichever one is chosen. But I don't know if you're looking for a recommendation from us, Mr. Hendrix would be my recommendation.
Laurel?
Just a comment, I do think they're both really good choices, and good thing we have this category every year, because we can nominate them, you know, each year. My only concern is with the nomination for Ananda, with all of the extra papers, while I appreciate it, I don't think our actual NASB nomination includes all these papers.
Correct, we keep it to three pages. Any other thoughts from anybody else?
No, I agree, it's, I agree, it's a.
Hit your mic.
I just, yeah. I got it. No, I agree, I think there, it's a, it's, it's difficult, I mean, I don't know how you want to do it, just go down the line, or?
Well, we can either go down the line, or somebody can make a motion, and we can vote it, just however you guys wanted to do it is. Well, go ahead, will anybody other have discussions on Campbell or Hendrix that you want to bring up before somebody makes a motion? I guess we'll go that direction.
I think I'm gonna lean with Ananda Campbell. I really like what Mr. Hendrix has done, which makes it tough, but I also really like the innovations to the library, and I think librarians are kind of, librarians as educators is kind of on everyone's minds right now, coming off of session with some of the library and bills that were there, so that would be why, and I think they're both excellent, but I would, I'd lean for the librarian at this time.
Well, and I think, and just.
Mike?
On that same note, you know, Ananda not only does a lot in the library, she does a lot in the community for our students, she does a lot in the middle school and the elementary schools for our students, so I mean, she's everywhere, not only advocating for librarians, but fighting for students and really finding ways to make the content accessible to them. So, I mean, that's why she stood out to me when I thought of this award.
Jordan, or Dawn?
I know, you know, we've been very blessed, and, but I am looking for the really good one, because I'm on a three-peat here. We've gotten the last two years, so.
I, I mean, I have to say, I'm the same way, I'm leaning towards Ananda. I think, you know, she's, she's a name in the community, she's, you know, I, I know they're both doing really, really good work, but I think I see her and hear about what she's doing more often than not, so I, you know, I'm just pretty impressed with what she's doing.
So, I'm looking for a motion, Laurel?
Add to the letter, too, because she did make arrangements with the public library. She talked about it today at freshman orientation. And if it hadn't been my third one in four years, I might have remembered better, but she made accommodation, she made arrangements with the public library to, for the early release days, for kids to go there to work on stuff, so that should be added into the letter, because that's a good thing.
Need a motion, so we can go and discuss and go on.
I move that Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the Nevada Association of School Board's nomination for Innovative Educator of the Year to be Ananda Campbell Richards? What's her?
I think she should.
Okay, sorry, I know both names, so. To be considered for the 2019 Annual Conference.
So, motion by Laurel, second by Joe, any other discussion? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I would like staff to send Mr. Hendrix a letter, and let him know that we were considering him for it, so that he knows that his work is being recognized by the district. Oh, and I'm gonna send around the form, so make sure you sign it. Okay, moving on to number 10. Discussion on possible action to reconsider authorizing the superintendent or his designee to negotiate a non-binding letter of intent for possible purchase of real property and improvements located at 1600 Snyder Avenue, Carson City, Nevada, for a price not to exceed $5.67, or $5,670,000, and to tender a refundable earnest money deposit in the amount not exceeding $50,000 to be applied against the purchase price, with the funding for the deposit to come from the Capital Projects Fund, and subject to such additional terms and conditions as a superintendent may agree in writing, including a reasonable period for feasibility study of not less than 90 days to order, conduct, and evaluate such appraisals, environmental assessments, test inspections of the property, and to obtain public input and return the board with a recommendation on proposed uses and whether and on what terms to proceed with purchase of this property for possible actions. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, we have the opportunity to discuss whether or not we should move forward with the property at 1600 Snyder Avenue. Just as a brief recap, you'll recall that at our last meeting, we had five trustees present, which constituted a quorum. But when it came down to making a motion regarding 1600 Snyder Avenue, we had a split vote, three to two. And because of that split vote, we did not have a majority of the board, and so that action failed. Even, even though we ended up with a number of three to two in that split vote, we didn't, we didn't have the majority of the board's vote. So, with, in our bylaws, one trustee can ask the president of the board to bring any item as an agenda item to the forefront, and that was done. So, we have tonight an opportunity to reconsider that particular action. I wanted to just make a couple of statements before our discussion begins, and one is that a yes vote from the board on this property would allow us to study in greater detail the possibilities around 1600 Snyder Avenue. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are obligated to buy. The yes vote, however, does mean that we would establish a premise that our intent is to look very deeply at this property, and if we liked the, the total outcome, we could then carry through and actually purchase the property, but that would require a second vote by the board. So, tonight's yes vote would allow us to move forward to study the property. And then, at some time within that 90 days, and I've counted that out to, any action would be required of the board at the October 22 meeting, if we were to get a yes vote tonight, that the board would then be asked again whether or not they wanted to actually purchase the property, or whether they wanted to say no. And we would have to move within that timeframe to get our earnest money back, and to notify the seller of our decision. I also wanted to let you know that I was able to get some information from our folks. As you know, we just completed a new building at Pioneer High School, and because this was all, these projects were built on property that we owned, this price per square footage amount is made without any land costs. So, at Pioneer High School, we paid $426 per square foot for that new construction. At Mark Twain, the number was a little different, they didn't have to do quite as much excavating at this site, but the dollar amount that was used was $382 per square foot. And at Fremont, the number was slightly higher, because they did have to overexcavate, and that number is $407 per square feet, square foot, rather, I should say. So, as, as I just looked at the information that I had regarding 1600 Snyder Avenue, if we were to purchase and move in without any new renovations, and we know that that's really not where we're going, but, but just with the purchase price that has been stated, that amount is $131 per square foot. So, there's some, there's some consideration in there, just as we look at how much it costs for new construction versus how much it may cost to purchase something that already exists. Now, obviously, we're gonna have to, you know, do a lot of discussion in there, and I'm hoping that that's what tonight looks like. I've, I've met with some trustees who asked the question, well, you know, this is a little outside of the usual and customary process. We usually put a new building that fits our needs on our own property, and we build it, and it lasts for 100 years. Those are the kinds of discussions that I would value from the trustees, to know what your thoughts are. And obviously, with the question that's before you tonight, you can discuss whether or not we should let this proposal die, or this consideration die. We can consider whether or not we want to study it in greater detail, and do our due diligence within that feasibility time. You'll notice that the language on this agenda item says reconsider, and so, the terms of the letter of intent that we have before us right now, that has been signed by the seller, it gives us a chance to reconsider that as well. So, that's kind of an introduction. I thank Mr. Yuheart, he's here tonight to answer any particular questions that you might have. Of course, Mr. Pavlakis is very astute, and can provide additional assistance or answer questions that we might have. But I'm hoping that we have a robust discussion tonight, that one way or another, we can walk away from this meeting knowing kind of where we stand and where we'd like to go. And just to point out the obvious, we have six members present tonight. Okay?
Thank you. Like to start the discussion? Anyone? Richard?
I'll start it. I have the same concerns that I expressed at the last meeting. You know, renovation costs, number one. I know that the initial per-square-footage seems to be very reasonable. Renovations cost is what I've been told, and research I've done, can actually be more than new construction. So, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration if we move forward. I still have the concern about if we do move forward, the staffing considerations, you know, how is it going to be staffed, where are we going to get the personnel to staff it? The public meeting, I think, still needs to occur, and I'm just curious, and maybe you can answer this question, is if the public has a meeting, and they determine that it's not a site they want to move forward with, based upon their recommendation, is that, I guess, a determination that we can get out of the contract, or, I mean, out of this purchase?
Trustee Varner, as I have experienced those public meetings in the past, it would be information that would simply be recommended, or not recommended, that just passed on to the board, and then the board would still be able to make their mind.
Yeah, I understand that, that's what I meant, but if they came back with a negative recommendation, and then the board decided not to follow, you know, follow the recommendation, is that reason that we could terminate the, going forward with it?
Yes.
Then I have one other question, and I'll turn over to somebody else. On the last page, not, I guess not the last page, but the page where the signature of Mr. Yuheart is, in the last paragraph, about three-quarters way down, it says, "Is anticipated a purchase agreement will be prepared and presented to the parties for execution within 30 days following the execution of the letter of intent. If no purchase agreement is made and executed, the letter of intent shall be deemed null and void." If, does that mean we have to agree to purchase a property within that 30-day period time, and enter into a contract, or, I guess, intent to purchase agreement within that 30-day period? It's the way it sounds to me, but I could be confused.
So, that's, it's a good question. And as a lawyer, you've been presented with a letter of intent. And so, a letter of intent, in my mind, and you could probably get three lawyers and get three different answers, but a letter of intent is kind of an agreement to agree. You're not really bound by a letter of intent. And in speaking with Mr. Stokes about this, I think there's really, it's kind of a moral commitment, that, yeah, we, we agree that we are interested in the property, we would consider a purchase price of this 5-point-whatever-million, but it's, our willingness is contingent upon a number of factors. One of the factors is a, an appraisal. So, if the appraisal comes back and says the property's not worth 5.5, sorry. If the, we, title report indicating this status of title to the property, can the seller convey good title to us? If there's something that's objectionable to the title, sorry, we, we want to be able to conduct a feasibility study. And one of the elements of a feasibility study, in my opinion, again, as one lawyer, is that you are going to conduct these public meetings, which are set forth in the, in the document, and if there's a hue and cry from the public that, no, we don't want our students going to that site for a school, that would be information that would be presented to you, and this board could decide that it's not feasible. So, those are the elements that are incorporated into this letter of intent. When it comes time to preparation of a purchase agreement, my anticipation would be that those same contingencies would be formalized. So, now, we would have a, assuming that there, the purchase agreement is negotiated within this 30-day time period, my expectation is that it would encompass most, if not all, of the elements that are contained in this letter of intent, but it would then become binding. But the contingencies for an appraisal, for a feasibility study, for approval of the condition of title, the seller's ability to convey good, good and sufficient title, and the completion of this feasibility study to the satisfaction of the board, would all be elements that would be documented as contingencies, contingencies that would allow the board to say, or, on a reasonable basis, obviously, that these contingencies have been met and satisfied, and we are therefore prepared to close the transaction within, I think the expectation is, 30 days after the 90-day period, unless there's an extension granted. If the purchase agreement contingencies are not satisfied, then the, the expectation is that the, the purchase agreement would provide for a refund of the security deposit. I don't know if Mr. Yuheart agrees or disagrees with any of that, but that's, that would be my expectation.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Questions? Joe?
So, generally speaking, I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward on this, I think it's worth exploring. I am curious, and I apologize, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'm catching up a little bit, but the price not to exceed $5,670,000, we're not, so as I understand it, we're not locked into that price at this point, because no appraisal's been done, and that's right, basically an asking price, but I want to make sure I understand the wording.
I want to say yes, in response to your question, but again, as a moral commitment, the board is saying, or would be authorizing Mr. Stokes to say, if the appraisal comes back at 5.6 million, then we would be prepared to pay that price. There might be other reasons why we decide not to purchase it, we feel that. As, there, there might be other reasons why we decide not to purchase it. We feel that the appraisal's too high. But if you're just ticking off the boxes, the box of an appraisal is ticked if the appraisal comes back at that price. And there's at least a moral commitment on your part, in good faith, to say, we realize that that's the price, assuming the appraisal comes back.
And I feel more comfortable with that. I mean, my feeling is if the environmental work and everything that goes into this checks out, it's like, yep, you know, green light to go, but the appraisal comes in, and I'm just making up numbers, 4.2, I want to make sure we can come back and say, we'd like to purchase the property, but here's our, here's our counter to the asking price.
Right. There's no obligation on the seller to sell for less than 5.6, but the district would not be committed to purchase if the appraisal didn't come back at 5.6, the asking price.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, can I, one more, I just had one more question. And maybe I heard this before, but I'm not sure. Is this asking price, it seems like it was like five and a half or something before. Did it go up?
They added in the Realtors Commission.
Okay.
That's, that's the different figure than the first time that this was brought to the board.
Sorry. So, is that typical? I mean, I know you can do whatever you want when you structure a deal, but is that for this type of property and this type of use, is that a typical thing to do?
I can tell you that based on the action of the board at the June 25th meeting, 23rd meeting, there was approval by the trustees to put in the initial letter of intent that we sent to the seller, our initial, our initial dollar amount, which was 5.5 million. As typically happens, I think, in real estate negotiations from the seller, it came back with a higher cost.
I just want to be clear, the 5.67 million, that includes the land and all the buildings. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Laurel? Just a question I have. Regarding Richard's concerns with whether renovation costs might exceed costs of new construction, is that something that we could get estimates for during the 90-day feasibility time, that we could kind of get an idea if we make a decision as to what type of school it might be? We could look into that, and then same with estimates on staffing considerations. I know, as we have more students come, we're still going to have to have more teachers to educate them. We're just gonna have to have more room for them to be. So, are those things that can be taken care of in the 90 days?
I have, I have reached out to my peers in Washoe County School District and also Elko County School District, both of which are either in the process of building a new elementary school, or have just built one. And I was hoping to have that ready for you tonight, but unfortunately, I didn't get that information to see what their cost per square foot is on those buildings, and to see whether or not those, those values came because of the added price for the land, or if they built on properties that they already owned. So, yes, I believe we can get that, that dollar amount. Part of, of the work that would have to be done would be to hire an architect, probably engineers, people that could give us a visual of what a potential use might look like. And I hope to be able to bring back a variety of use types. So, you know, what might this campus look like if we were to put an elementary school here? What might it look like if we were to do some kind of specialty school? And so, yeah, we would, we would try to do as much as we could, including staffing, to provide that information. I think that's critical. I, I'm not sure we can make a really informed decision without that information.
Any other questions from the board? Opinions? This is just the beginning, if you guys realize. The, the one thing that this is bringing in, it's pushing to the forefront, and it's time for us to start talking about rezoning. It's time for us to talk about where we see this district in 10 years, and what's available out there to do that. And this is just one of those stepping stones that's gonna get us started, so I want you to keep that in mind, too. But this is just the beginning. Seeing none, is there any discussion from public comment? Anybody from the public? Mr. Yuheart, is there anything you want to add to the discussion? Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing none. Would anybody like to make a motion in one direction or the other? Or let it die?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent or his designee to enter into a non-binding letter of intent for the purchase of the real property and improvements located at 1600 Snyder Avenue in Carson City, Nevada, for a purchase price not exceeding $5,670,000 plus closing cost, and to tender a refundable 50,000 earnest money deposit to be applied towards the purchase price, with funding for the deposit to come from the Capital Projects Fund, subject to additional terms and conditions, as the superintendent may agree in writing, including a period for a feasibility study of not less than 90 days to order, conduct, and evaluate such appraisals, environmental assessments, tests and inspections of the property, and to obtain public input and present a recommendation to the board on the proposed uses and whether and on what terms to proceed with the purchase of the property.
Motion by Joe, second by Dawn. Any other discussion on the motion? Any other public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing no opposition, motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Yuheart, for being here. We appreciate your time. Moving on to number 11, approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second by Laurel. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Moving on to number 12. Formal, informal items. There are a lot of stuff going on this next few weeks. Hope you'll be able to attend any. If you have any questions, please contact Mr. Stokes. Seeing... Moving on to 13, request for future topic agenda items. As I said, we're probably gonna be looking here pretty quick at rezoning, and then we're gonna work on some public meetings for this project. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna let trustee Walker know that we do have some information regarding pre-K funding, and we'll make a presentation at our next board meeting.
Anyone else? Remember, you always have an opportunity to call me or Mr. Stokes before a meeting, so if there's something you think of in the interim. Seeing none, I move for adjournment. Everybody enjoy this extra time.
7:56, what?